Called the Silent Springs Planning Commission Meeting of Tuesday, June 9, 2020 to order at this time. Roll call, please.
Song. Montgomery.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Smith. Driscoll.
Here.
Alvin.
Here.
Let's pause just a moment. Mr. Smith is arriving. We can recognize him and add him in before we get started. Blue proper words is let the record reflect that J.W. Smith is present.
My apologies, Commissioners.
No problem. Next item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes of the virtual meeting of May 12th, 2020, that we all received prior to today. Here any additions, corrections, changes, deletions needed? There being none, do I have a motion to approve? Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. It would be Ted. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Someday we'll get that right. First item, or first of the permit approvals will be a significant development permit, S.D. 2003 for 1611 Sherry Whitlock Drive. Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. Before you is a significant development permit occurring at 1611 Sherry Whitlock Drive. The request is to add a 24,635 square foot new classroom and office facility at the New Life Church campus. Here you see the full site plan. The proposed building is located here, I'll circle. With new parking on the west side as well as an additional drive. As you can see here, the drainage is routed along the east and north sides of the property through those designated ditches. This is a focused site plan, kind of more of a zoomed in area, the building under construction. The drive circulation is shown with the arrows here. People, vehicles coming in and kind of looping back around, coming back out. There will be ample sidewalks that will connect on both sides of the structures. That's what you see in the darker gray line on either side there. Here, this slide is a schematic what the building will look like. I'm showing you the south and north elevations. The areas shown on the other side are covered porticos used for vehicular pickup and drop offs. The facility will be constructed of natural materials such as stone or stucco. This image shows you the site plan. We're just looking at, now it's been overlaid onto an aerial image. I'd like to point out the western drive in particular here, that's a circle. You can see that it aligns closely with the drive of the daycare center on the other side of the street, right there. While this will not directly be an issue with the daycare center since the operating at different times than the church uses, is very close to northern drive of the Sacred Creek Community Church. The applicant has indicated that there is a possible second phase of the project, which will include adding a new sanctuary assembly spaced north of the proposed building. When this occurs, traffic will increase on these drives, thereby possibly creating a traffic complication with the increasing traffic from the Sacred Creek Church. Staff is suggesting a condition that the traffic egressing the western drive, the one I pointed there, which is proposed for the improvements, would be made as a ride out only or westbound only drive. If vehicles wishing to travel east from this drive can do so by turning left on Heartland and then working their way back to the Sherry Whitlock-Lincoln intersection. And that would be right here, that's where Heartland Drive is. Here you see the site looking north. Again, here's the location of that western drive, and you can see how closely it lines the daycare, and then this is the church drive for Sacred Creek. So, this is a current curb cut, as you can see, but there's no actual driveway paved. The, so yeah, and then I already pointed out the locations of the drives, so this kind of gives you an orientation there, what the situation is like. I'd like to cover some of the staff conditions at this time. The first is regarding the exterior parking lot lighting. This is need to be shown on the building plan set, which would include a photometric plan. The second condition is related to a sidewalk improvement fee needed for a section of sidewalk on Lincoln Street, which is actually just outside of the frame of this photo, that cannot be reasonably constructed by the applicant due to drainage structures in that area. So staff is assessing a fee in lieu for that sidewalk. The third condition refers to that ride out requirement for the western drive, which we have just been discussing. And finally, the fourth and fifth conditions are centered around drainage improvements required on the site. Staff is recommending approval with these following conditions, and we stand by for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on behalf of the applicant that wishes to address the commission?
I'll take this off so I can see what I'm looking at here, sorry. Yes, Ron Holmeyer, Civil Engineering, 701 South Mount Olive. Not near as hot this way either. We, you know, we've gone through this quite a bit with staff. We don't completely agree that an existing grandfather driveway should have to be held to a higher standard of the right turn out only. I know they are saying that is what is needed to have, to comply with good planning, but at the same time, that's an existing driveway that should be under a grandfather clause, and so we, and in addition to that, as we pointed out to them, which they've confirmed is, is across from a driveway that is not going to be used at the same time as the church, so there shouldn't be any conflict or concern anyway. So we don't, we would appreciate it if you would remove the right turn condition from your recommendation for approval. And then, this property's had a long history with the drainage, specifically the drainage coming from the north out of Gabriel Park subdivision. City has tried a couple of times to improve the drainage through this site in order to improve the drainage in Gabriel Park subdivision. And, yeah, it just seems a little tough to us that we're now being told that because there's a drainage complaint from a neighbor that we're expected to further improve the drainage from the detention basin over to Lincoln Street, even though there is no plans to do any improvements over there unless they somehow get enough funds to actually build that extra drive entrance. And at that time, they'd be more than glad to, because at that time, they'll have to get a highway permit to do the driveway and the drainage improvements. Whereas if we do drainage improvements now, more than likely, we'll have to get a highway permit, construction permit to do the drainage improvements, and then come back again later to do a driveway. So that's another condition that we would request that you not include in your recommendation for approval. Yeah, I have no problem with the updated drainage analysis. We can do that. Church is gone above and beyond, in my opinion, to help the city with the drainage in that part of town, and so we would just like that favor returned. And I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody asks.
Thank you. Anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission in regards to this project? Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Christopher McCoy. I live at 1504 Abraham Drive. I'm wondering what this is going to do to the drainage issues we have here in the city. The water runs down from, I think it's Michael Lane, straight into my driveway, into the, into the retention pond. And I was wondering, you know, what's all this extra asphalt? And what's this stuff going to do to me?
Okay. Any others, questions?
Actually, not that I can tell.
Okay. Justin, do you want to handle any of that, please? Thank you.
Justin Bland, City Engineer. This, this actually shouldn't affect the Abraham area at all, actually, because that's so far upstream. Can kind of show you on the, I don't know if we actually have one that's zoomed out quite far enough, but the Abraham area would be, it kind of comes from the north here. All this new runoff area that, in the building, will come down into this detention basin here, so I don't anticipate this changing anything upstream of this site right now.
The flow across this property is from north to south, true, false?
Correct, yes.
So any impacts would be south?
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that wishes to address the commission on this project? Mr. Estes, please state your name and address.
M. Estes, 215 Grand Court, Silent Springs. I pastor out there at New Life Church, and just want to give a brief history. I think I heard three minutes. I don't think I've ever done a sermon that quickly, but back in 2008, the, the people operating the city at that point came to us, said they had a problem north of us with drainage, water flooding, getting into garages and whatnot, asked us if they could cut a drainage across New Life Church property. It's not the most beautiful thing in the world, wasn't our, you know, what we had desired, but to cooperate with the city, we said absolutely. So there's a big swale cut across. The retention pond that we built was for the future development of the, of the church, these phases that are, that are being proposed. And then we were able to purchase the corner property there, Sherry Whitlock and Lincoln Street. And at that time, there was just a drainage that went catty corner from the northwest to the southeast, and it was really just a bog and mosquito factory, basically. And so we approached the city about creating drainage to the street and down the side into their main collection point. And at that point, it was very feasible to do that. So all that to say, we, we want to be cooperative with, with you. We have been. Even when the drainage ditch wasn't enough, they came back and wanted to put an underground pipe, 24-inch pipe, I believe, around the edge of our property, the city did, and we gave permission to do that. So we've been more than willing to, to work with and will in the future. We, we appreciate the goodwill that we have with you, but I just want to give a little history that goes back to 2008, and if any of you want to come out and look at it firsthand, I'm always around there to, to show you. But thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Holmeyer.
Yes, sir.
The drainage improvements that are shown, or let me think of a better way. You're not in opposition of making drainage improvements? Or it's the timing that's the conflict?
It's timing. Church is more than willing to do the improvements, just that, you know, we're, we're expanding the detention basin to make provision for these improvements and the future addition to the building. We're routing the drainage from the Abraham, you know, Abraham area around the detention basin so that there's no possibility of potentially backing the water up that would somehow impede that flow. So we're making that separation across the property before it went through their detention basin. So, but it's from the detention basin over to Lincoln Street, where the future drive is going to go in, is the part that they would like to wait and do with the detention, with the future driveway, and not in this phase.
Thank you for the clarification. Anyone else from the public that wishes to address the commission on this project? Being none, I'll call it end to public comment period. Anyone from the commission have questions or comments regarding S.D. 2003?
My question would, would probably be, Ben, you might get help with this, but is there a reason that we wouldn't allow them to do these improvements down the road? And we, we wouldn't require them right now?
The drainage improvements? I probably got to defer to Justin for that. I believe it was related to the current impacts, but I think Justin can comment more on that.
Justin Bland, City Engineer. That's a possibility. You know, staff's take on this is that since this section of the ditch was rerouted to the east, if I can draw on this correctly, we, we've actually had some complaints from, from the neighboring property owner that the drainage on his property's gotten worse. So since, since that was done, staff feels that we want to get it done sooner than later, which kind of addressed the, you know, the effect that it's had on that neighboring property. So that's why we're recommending it for the first phase.
Anyone else from the commission have comments or questions?
I do, for Justin, sorry. Since that was put in, was that not put in by you guys, by the city?
So the, the city staked that out, the church, we, we just basically staked this little out. The church constructed it, so I'm not sure what was actually constructed there, so.
Okay. And then my next question is, when we're talking about the right turn only, that, that, I, I feel like that's, I understand what you're trying to do, but I feel like that that would even be safer, even though it's probably not going to be the same traffic on Sunday, than, than the current drive coming out almost directly right across from Sacred Creek. So I feel like with the current drives coming out, that it shouldn't be much worse to be able to go right or left out of that grandfather den. To me, I mean, and if, I mean, I'm sure there'll be some parking in there, but I think the majority on Sunday, if I understand correctly, will be in the current parking lot. So I feel like if that's already as bad as it is, because that's probably causes a little bit of problem there, that that driveway would almost, almost possibly relieve a little bit of, you know, traffic right there. But, that's just my thoughts, and I understand the, the safety of it, but that's my concern. And, and the drainage issue, I feel like if they are, you know, if there was anything that could be done slightly to modify what's happening for the backup over there, but leave the major construction for when they're improving, I feel would be fair.
Anybody else from the question?
I have a question, and as I was reviewing this, I highlighted a couple of things. To quote in part, in part, "Since this ditch was realigned, the drainage runoff has been prone to backing up and cutting the corner of the neighbor's property. This has caused damage to his property in the form of erosion and disposition, depositation." Is that still the case?
Yeah, yes, that this, the property there, I've met with a gentleman that owns that property probably three or four times over the last six months, and I've seen the property. Basically, what happens is the, it's this, this corner right here is kind of where the water kind of comes back and just fills in this whole corner.
Where, where, okay.
Up here, behind this house, this brown house, right, or the brown roof right there. It basically, you know, it's, it's kind of meant to kind of come down and across, but what's happening is it kind of comes this way through there when it really backs up. You know, so we're, we're not, you know, I don't, I don't know that it would take anything substantial to fix this. We're just, you know, need to kind of analyze it, and you know, maybe just a matter of getting a bulldozer out there to widen it out, possibly. I don't think it's, has to be anything major. You know, it's just, just trying to get some more water pushed through to that ditch so it doesn't have to cut the corner, is what we're looking at.
So right now, it's just, the water's cutting the corner?
Yes, that's right. Yeah, we've,
Your ditch is not deep enough? Is that what's causing it to cut the corner?
Well, there's not enough, it's really flat, so there's not, you can't go deeper. He's going to have to go wider.
And, and that's what you're requiring with this?
Well, we haven't, we're, we're asking for an analysis and a proposal. We're not saying it has to be a certain thing. We're, we're just wanting to kind of improve the situation. So, you know, if, if they have a better, you know, cheaper, you know, alternative, we'd be open to that, but we're just, we're just looking to give this gentleman that lives there some relief.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's, that's where I have an issue, is I have no problem approving this, this, but if we're still causing damage to neighbors' property, then I have reservations.
Anyone else from the commission? With that being said, I'll entertain motion in whatever form. Be sure to comment on any, all, however you wish in your motion in regards to staff conditions.
I'll make a motion to approve significant development, S.D. 20-03, with the recommendations provided by staff of, one, the applicant must show exterior parking lot lighting with a photometric plan in the architectural plans prior to building permit issuance. The applicant shall pay a sidewalk fee prior to the building permit issuance. The applicant shall show drainage improvements from detention basin outlet on the right away of Highway 264, North Lincoln Street, on the construction plan set prior to building permit. And the most important, an updated drainage analysis of the drainage improvement from the detention basin to the right away on North Lincoln Street shall be approved by the city engineer prior to building issuance.
I have a motion, and I want to clarify to make sure it's conditions one, two, four, and five, correct?
Correct, conditions one, two, four, and five.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Phillips, roll call, please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Motion passes and goes to the Board of Directors on July 7th of 2020. The next item on the agenda will be a rezone development permit for RZ 20-04, rezoned from R2 to P D, 700 to 1,000 block of Highway 16. Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. So before you is a rezoning permit located at the 700 to 1,000 block of Highway 16. The request is to rezon the property, an R2 property consisting of 29.6 acres to P D, that's the planned development. The P D zone will allow for multi-family and single-family housing on a large, in a large common area or park. If this request looks familiar to you, you would be correct. The Planning Commission reviewed the same application back in February. However, the applicant had to withdraw the application because there was an issue discovered with the legal description that needed to be worked out with a quiet, quiet title decree. That's now been finalized, allowing the applicant to proceed with the rezoning request. But, you know, by withdrawing, they had to start back over with a new application to the commission. This is the site plan provided by the applicant. The applicant's proposing two areas. You see there on the image on the right. Area one is intended for a single-family housing on slightly smaller lots than what's normally permitted in the R2 zone. The area two is shown to be the location for a future multi-family with designated open space for a park. The park will be maintained by a P O A to be established at the time of the development of the property. This was the original area three. However, that has now been merged with area two for improved cogency of the overall plan. The map is intended to be conceptual design. The applicant will have to come back to the city for a preliminary plat and significant development permit for the development approval. So, concept area one, as you may recall from the February review, what's unique with the P D zone is that the developers can customize their standards. We see this shown on the left. Some notable differences here includes decreased minimum lot surface area from 7,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet. That is from R2 to P D. The lot width is reduced by 10 feet from 60 feet down to 50 feet. Lot coverage has increased by 5%, up to 45% allowed. The floor-to-area ratio has increased by 5% to 4.5, or 0.45. And finally, the landscape buffer is reduced to 5 feet to match the proposed side setback. With our concept area two, we are transitioning to the north side of the same project where the multi-family is proposed. The notable code changes include adding a few more use units for lower-density family and small institutions, although I don't believe any of that's planned with this, but they did include that in there. Increase the side setbacks to be better in live typical R4 lot, and increasing the F A R up to 65%. This is the permit, more, most likely two-story apartment buildings. And then the concept area two continued. This is the park design, named the Great Lawn, buffers the single-family uses to the south from the multi-family uses. Future residences of both areas will be able to use the park. The park will contain a walking trail as well as playground in the center. The standards have not been changed, per se. However, the developer has agreed that the future preliminary plat and significant development permit would generally keep in line with this design. Below, you'll see a general description or explanation of the open space and landscaping for the Great Lawn. This same information was included with the proposal in your packet. So with the future land use map, we can see that there is a variety of housing densities shown, both high and, high-density and medium-density family. The high-density family allows for up to 30 units per acre, but you can see from the proposed zoning, the actual built density will be considerably less than that, set at 16 units per acre for area two, and only 6 units per acre for area one. The red zone in the northwest corner, as you see, in the redder color there, is the buffering that was done off of the Highway 412 commercial businesses. Because none of these businesses own this particular piece of land, it's not feasible for them to utilize that area, so staff is supportive of a proposal for all residential within that red box. And then here is the site. This is facing to the north. The neighborhood to the left, that's East Gate. You can see there that there's a stubout street built to tie into the subject property. And if you can't make that out, I can circle that right there. This will be completed to connect East Gate to Highway 16 as part of the development for the single-family portion of the project. You can see similar multi-family uses exist about in the land in the north, so it makes sense for this proposed multi-family to be kind of located up in this area. sense for this proposed multifamily to be kind of located up in this area. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the PD zone and its standards, and we stand by for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant that wishes to address the commission?
Good evening. Taylor Lindley, Crafton Toll &amp; Associates. I think Ben covered everything that I needed to say, so I'll just be here to answer any questions if you have them in me. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wishes to address the commission in regards to RZ 20-04? There being none, I'll call it end to public comment period. Anyone from the commission have any questions or comments regarding RZ 2004? There being none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve RZ 2004.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Who's the second?
Thomas.
Thomas, okay. Thank you. Mr. Phillips, roll call when you're ready.
Sally?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rascal?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passes and will go to the Board of Directors on July 7th of 2020. Next up on the agenda will be board-approved permits and then staff-approved permits. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the board now exclusively approves final plats that are identical to a preliminary plat that's been already reviewed by the commission. Nonetheless, as with other planning-related items that are approved by the board, I will be keeping the commission informed of these pending applications. This final plat is scheduled to go to the board next Tuesday, that's on the 16th. However, it is requested to be tabled to July 7th due to some outstanding work that's not been completed with the subdivision. I believe some curb is still to be done, and as you know, that these have to be 100% finished before they can be accepted by the board. The final plat finalizes the revised Gunter's addition, the infill project located at 100 block of North Country Club, and the project includes a, a commercial lot that's some fronting on Lincoln Street. So here is the site plan, nearly identical to the preliminary plat. The only difference is that the lot here, which I'll circle, is now excluded from the addition due to the ownership being changed, so it was no longer controlled by the, the subdivider, so it's not being included as part of the, the final plat, but the lot is staying exactly the same, so it should not be an issue with the changes. And then here is the site view taken a few weeks ago. As I mentioned, it's still partially under construction, so that's why it's going out to the July 7th meeting. Staff is recommending approval of this to the board when it's ready, and we are available for any of your questions.
Moving right along.
All right. No questions, great. So moving on, we have a right-of-way closure that's also to be reviewed by the board next week. This is occurring at 2100 Highway 412 East. This is just behind the Tubby's Auto Sales Building, which is within a subdivision called the Killer Brew's addition. And here is the proposed area to be closed along in here, as it's an old unplowed or unpaved right-of-way as part of that original subdivision, I believe from 1962 or so. This also, what they're also doing is proposing to consolidate these lots together, so this will become Lot 7R, and then this is going to be Lot 5R as a separate lot consolidation, lot line adjustment permit, which is actually shown as item F1 on the agenda today. Here is the site. As I mentioned, the right-of-way has never been built or used by the public. Staff will be recommending approval to the board, and we stand by for any of your questions.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, moving right along.
And the last I have is the lot split application. So this is occurring at 1,110 East Lake Francis Drive, and it splits 9.09 acre parcel into two lots, creating the Thompson addition. And here we see the site plan, the two lots. This should be filed this week. Staff has already approved it. Any questions on this? That concludes my items. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or anything from the commissioners? With that being said, I have a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.